Okay, thanks for being here everybody. We were in executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual. So we've already done our pledge of allegiance, so I'll spare you that. And before we start, we do have a special presentation tonight from Mr. Sisano in the math department. But before we start, I just want to thank the buildings and grounds team, the facilities team for their amazing work at graduation. And you know, the high school graduation was obviously just a big, beautiful, lovely ceremony. But I know there's lots of events happening all week. The middle school graduation, the moving up ceremonies. And so just a thank you to Mike Twardy and his team of cleaners and custodians and grounds people for the extra work to make our event special. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Bowers if you'd like to introduce our algebra conversation.
We'll scoot over a little bit so you can get to your PowerPoint. But Lou Sisano is here to talk about one of the things that we discussed at the last meeting. And there's, there has been a lot of discussion at the district level about the potential of not providing the Algebra II TRIG Regents next year for many reasons. And I outlined some of the reasons at the last time, and then the board had some questions for Lou. So Lou is here, and he provided some information, and we'll invite him up to the microphone, if you're willing.
Thanks for taking the time to listen to this. What I kind of wanted to do was just make sure that everybody kind of understands what we've been talking about. And I want to try to answer a couple of questions that came to me, I think came up at last meeting. I guess where I wanted to start was what we're attempting to do, what we want to do in the math department. And our first goal, our mission is really to deliver a math curriculum that better prepares students for the math that they're gonna take for the remainder of high school and into college. Prepare them for their careers, prepare them for the SAT, prepare them for the ACT exams. We want to provide a math curriculum that's aligned with the courses that they're taking, both science and math courses. And this includes TRIG. The TRIG curriculum, if you're not familiar with the Algebra or the New York State curriculum, what's happened over the last few years as we moved into Common Core, TRIG has largely been taken out of the Algebra II TRIG course. So you know, we're all kind of familiar with math and the flow that we go through, Algebra I followed by geometry, followed by advanced algebra and TRIG. And with the movement to Common Core, the TRIG component was essentially taken out and replaced with statistics. And that's what has raised a bit of a concern on our part. And in addition to this, what we also are keeping in mind is that we have a single pathway currently to getting an Advanced Regents designation. And what we're looking at with our alternatives is multiple pathways. So I kind of want to explain that a little bit. Currently, this is the way you get through the math curriculum. You take Algebra I, you take a Regents exam. You take geometry, you take a Regents exam. You take Algebra II, you take a Regents exam. So each one of these courses culminate in a Regents exam. And that last one, as I said a couple of seconds ago, doesn't really include much TRIG at all. And that's where our concern is. What we want to do is continue what we're doing right now. Algebra I followed by geometry, both of those courses culminate in a Regents exam. The Algebra II course that we would teach will take the statistics out that the Common Core has in there and replace it with the TRIG we used to teach. What that means is that we no longer are gonna have the Regents to culminate that course, because it won't be appropriate anymore. What we don't want to shut the door completely on those students and families that still want to pursue an Advanced Regents designation. What we would do is offer a few alternatives on how you can still get it. Certainly, you can take the Algebra II Regents, and that would do it for you. There's other pathways. Students that take AP Calculus and pass the AP exam, they're eligible for Advanced Designation. People that take the Level 2 SAT Math Exam, score a 550 or greater, they're eligible. By opening up the Regents to students taking it at a different point in time, they could take it after any course of their choosing. If they want to take it after Intro to Calculus, they can do that. If they want to take it at the end of Algebra II, they could do that. So we've kind of opened up a few different pathways to get there. Although we're not stressing the Advanced Regents designation, and I'll talk about that a little bit. The rationale, as the state's moved into the new Common Core curriculum, many districts have moved into this route. I've listed some of them here, Lakeland, Somers, Croton, Edgemont. These are all school districts that have had similar discussions within their district and came to the same conclusion. I live in the Lakeland School District. My children go to Lakeland Schools. My daughter's just finishing her sophomore year at Walter Panis High School. This is exactly the flow that they use, where they've gone to back to the Algebra II TRIG curriculum. The Common Core curriculum, it's very good. I mean, it's very good. We look at the Algebra I, we look at the geometry, and we look at the majority of Algebra II. It's a very good curriculum. The only thing that we have a little issue with is the removal of TRIG. And where we used to spend maybe 30% of the year on TRIG, what would you say, Christian?
40% of the year, now it's 10%.
That's about 10% of the year is what we're spending on TRIG now, which is a big deduction, reduction. So what does that do to us? It causes a little issue as students complete this course, move on to the next course, which is generally Intro to Calculus, where we, where students need TRIG. And so what Christian has had to do this year is teach all of that TRIG curriculum within the Intro to Calculus class, which has, which results in us not necessarily getting through all the calculus that we're supposed to get through. So you know, we're kind of looking and trying to patch all this stuff together, and we're seeing that it's, nothing's really fitting, and we're not, by patching it, we're not really addressing what the issue is. So as I said, we've had an issue with, that we've had to fill that void within Intro to Calculus. The topics that we didn't cover in Intro to Calculus, we're gonna have to cover them in AP Calculus. So we're gonna have to catch up there. So we keep playing catch-up each year that we're in this, in the current curriculum. When you look at the Regents exams themselves, we're concerned about cut scores. We're concerned about, if you look at the Algebra II exam, 26 points out of 86 got you a pass in January. That's the same thing that gets you a pass today in the June Regents. That has a little bit of an impact as we, as kids start thinking, wow, is this, how much do I really need to know to pass? And that gets us a little concerned, because we want the kids to know this stuff, and we want them to learn the curriculum. So it is a challenge for us when you look at some odd cut points. So what are the benefits of doing this? First of all, we can return our Intro to Calculus to what we used to do, and prepare kids for AP Calculus. We want to deliver a more appropriate Algebra II course, preparing them for math and science. TRIG is a very big part of physics, and we want to make sure students are ready to take on the challenges of physics. It goes beyond the math department. TRIG is a component of the SATs and the ACTs. We want to make sure our students are prepared going in, in the best, with the best knowledge that we can give them. And we kind of want to remove a little bit of the emphasis that we have on this high-stakes testing. We like the Regents exams, don't get me wrong. We like the Algebra I, we like the geometry exam. The Algebra II exam's a fine exam, we just don't like the curriculum that's behind it. And that's where the problem is. Leaving out the TRIG is where, what our problem is. And what we want to do is provide students with the alternatives to get the Advanced Regents designation if they choose. We just don't necessarily want to force everybody there if that's not what they're, what they're choosing. So that, that's kind of the benefits that we see of it. I know there were a couple of questions that I got that I did want to address before I take on any other questions. One question that was passed to me was, how's the reaction been to this in other school districts? And I can speak personally about what's going on at Lakeland. It's been very well received there. My daughter just finished the Algebra II TRIG class there. I'm very happy with the fact that they restored that, and I feel that she's so much better prepared going in to the SATs, ACTs, and the future math classes that she'll take. As I've talked to other parents in the community, they've kind of had the same reaction, and feeling, feeling good about it. Another question that I got was, how will SUNY schools look at this? When we looked at, when we looked at the admissions process, Advanced Regents designation doesn't show up on a student's transcript until after they graduate. They've gone through the admissions process, they're in school, in their college, that's when it finally shows up. So it's not that big of a component. What the schools look at is what courses does the high school offer, and what courses did the student take? Are they high-quality courses, and did the students challenge themselves and take it on? That's what we want to provide them. The second thing is, we have to keep in mind that, you know, we kind of take this vision of the Regents being such an important exam. We're the only state that gives a Regents exam. So they're accepting students from all over the country, all over the world. They can't be screening based on Regents exam, because not every student has it. And, and so, you know, we're kind of downplaying that piece of it a little bit. They still will have two challenging Regents exams, Algebra I and geometry, and a challenging final in Algebra II TRIG. And, and you know, so they're still gonna be assessed with high-quality assessments and with a high-quality curriculum. So I wanted to take on any, any other questions that you may have.
Is there anybody here that's here for the presentation specifically, students or parents that have any questions for Mr. Sisano?
I just wanted to, there was a parent here at the last meeting. First of all, thank you for taking the time to come out and explain. I think it's clarified for me certainly, and I hope for a lot of the others. A parent at the last meeting asked, what's gonna happen for those students that are kind of caught in between? So maybe if you can just shed some light on...
Well, for next year's students, we'll continue to do what we did this year. Christian's gonna continue to teach TRIG within, within Intro to Calculus. We'll continue to fill that void. No student will get missed. And then what will happen is, the students going into Algebra II TRIG this year, well, they'll just, they'll be on this path. So it, I don't want to say it's invisible, but it's as close to invisible as it can be.
The one issue... Oh, sorry. I'm just curious, what will get lost in the probability and statistics?
There's still a fair amount of probability and statistics in Algebra I, so it won't get lost from that aspect. And kids that are interested in that, they largely take our AP Statistics class, where they're getting a much deeper level of probability and statistics. We're, we're only covering it at a surface level. One of the, one of the issues with the Common Core, the expectation was that they were gonna narrow the curriculum so we can go in deeper. What they really did was widen it. So it's pretty much very wide and not very deep at all. So it's just a superficial thing that we're doing right now. So I don't know that there would be much loss there at all.
Because there is some probability in statistics in the SAT and ACT as well.
Correct. And they're largely getting that in Algebra I. And any, any additional reinforcement that they need, they're taking the SAT prep class, and certainly they're getting the exposure and the practice and reinforcement of the things that they learned when they took Algebra I.
So I have a question and a comment. When would they, when would you see them taking the SAT math part, like that pathway?
There's, there's two SAT math exams. There's a Level 1, which, you know, later in the student's sophomore year or in their early junior year would be an appropriate time. And I would say the Level 2 would be later in their junior year or the beginning of their senior year. I mean, those, those would seem to be the right spot.
So, well, because that would be the, that would be, so after geometry, you'd see them going into Algebra II?
Algebra II TRIG, yes.
And then, would they then take the Level 2 after Algebra TRIG?
It would definitely be after Algebra II TRIG. There'll probably be an Intro to Calculus at the time that they're taking it.
So they would take it then after, after calculus, rather than...
Or at least while they're taking calculus.
Okay, all right. Because I'll say it again, I said at the last meeting that I felt that if that was gonna be the case, then the district should, should pay for that exam, because that would be, because based on, the way you're putting it, that would be the most common, the most likely pathway, based on this, or the Regents itself. But I mean, the AP Calculus exam, that's, you know, that's on a much different level. So, so I would think that, which is doable. I mean, it's not, I'm not saying that the district can't do that. But since that's clearly would be a pathway for, for most of the students under this system, I think the district should, should pay for that particular exam. I know that has nothing to do with you, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying. Yeah. Well, yeah. But I think that just needs to be built into the mind, I believe, that needs to be built into the mindset. And my second comment is, and again, I'm not, don't take this as negative, you guys seem to be well-thought, and it sounds, it sounds positive to me. I would just be wary of, of just trying to stay away from some of the language being so down on the Advanced Regents diploma, okay? Because, you know, first of all, if a student transfers after their freshman year in college, their transcript will play, it will come into play for their new college. So, so there is a place for it on their transcript. So I'd just be careful in being so down that, oh, it's really not needed and stuff like that. So, I mean, it's, it's a different pathway, and it's, it's better preparing them for SATs, and that, that makes complete sense. That should be really the mindset of the conversation, rather than that it's really not, you know, needed.
Absolutely. We just want to make sure that they have that, that they have a pathway.
Yeah.
And kids aren't interested in it, and those that are, I mean, we don't want to shut the door on it. And that's, that's one of the concerns that I had. I don't want to say we're not doing it.
Oh, sorry. The concern that I had, and we talked about this also at the last meeting, was the additional support 10th period. And again, has nothing to do with you, not your scheduling problem, but I really would not like to see that 10th period. I'd like to see something worked into a schedule where kids that participate in other activities aren't gonna be, you know...
The reason why we said it is because as, as students prepare for these exams, I mean, we just came out of it with all the Regents exams. It's crazy up in the high school.
Lou, just step a little closer to the...
And, and they want additional help, additional practice. And we want to make sure that we're gonna give them that help that they need. And a lot of it actually does happen in the 10th period and the HART. When you look at, over the last couple of weeks, how crowded we've been in those times, I just want to make sure kids know that, you know what, if they need a little extra help getting ready for the SAT Level 2, we're there. We're gonna, you know, we've got four math teachers here that are ready to jump in and help them through what they need to get through.
And I appreciate that, because I certainly know you are all there. I just didn't want it to be the main focus that we're gonna have this math extra help 10th period. So.
I just, my name's Kristen Pipero. I'm also a high school math teacher and the current teacher of the Algebra II Common Core course, and would be teaching the A2 TRIG course next year. I've had experience teaching the course prior to Common Core, when it was the old Regents A2 TRIG curriculum. And Lou did a great job in summing up the professional conversations that we've been having over the last year, when we first got a look at the curriculum last year and got a first run through it. And I just wanted to make a few comments on some of the things you brought up, Evan, about, you know, the pathways and the Advanced Regents distinction. As Lou had mentioned, in the prior curriculum, trigonometry was a 40% of the course load. It was very important. And as Lou said, if you go back to the rotation in Haldeen in the 60s and 70s, students took Algebra I, they took geometry, and then they took trigonometry and Algebra II. But the TRIG was a very important component. It is now only 1/12 or less than 10% of the current course. So while, as Lou had mentioned, there's incredible focus on different functions and the Algebra II component in the new Common Core, there's, there's about two chapters of statistics and probability. And as he mentioned, just because of the, the depth of the course, it's, there's, it's only 1/12. Each of those chapters is only 1/12. So would we, would the kids be missing a really detailed learning experience in statistics? No, because it, just as they did with TRIG, it's a very short snippet of our year. And you know, our goal is to produce future mathematicians, future engineers. So trigonometry is necessary to learn calculus, and they're going to the courses after with a deficit because of what the state has prescribed as a curriculum. A comment to the Advanced Regents distinction, of course, that is a wonderful goal and something that students should strive for. And all we'd like to do are provide different options in getting there. And so what the course that we would offer next year would really only be taking one statistics chapter and leaving it to AP Stats, where the kids can really study it in detail. We would still be covering some basic probability ideas, such as normal distribution and things that could be very helpful as they move on. So those would be the only few topics that students would have to get preparation, whether it be 10th period, HART program, and there's so many online resources available as well, to just get those two chapters in which, on the Regents exam, equates to about four or five questions maximum. So that, while the SAT II is a very viable route for kids to take, I'm also the SAT Preparation teacher, and that was another big red flag for me when I started seeing my prior students from Algebra II Common Core last year who lost the TRIG coming to me as juniors in SAT prep, not knowing fundamentals to answer a decent amount of SAT questions. So with all those things considered, yes, SAT II is a wonderful option, but the Algebra II Regents exam is still a very natural option for kids to take. And as I mentioned, we're trying to prepare future mathematicians, calculus students, and getting a three on the calculus exam is very reachable. In fact, most students are getting that, if not, they're getting fives. So, you know, we, as I mentioned, this has been a professional conversation we've been having since last year when we first got our hands into the new curriculum. And, you know, we're just confident as a department that we can offer a more well-rounded course for our students.
So just to get back, I think at Laura's question about, and Lou, I'm gonna interpret your response out loud, but in terms of the kids that are caught in between, right, the kids that are gonna be going into Intro to Calc without that TRIG. So I think we want to, we want to communicate really clearly what I imagine you all already do in practice, which is to make sure that you are gonna offer all those kids all the support that they need to master, to master whatever they're not getting, because we're still moving things around. I mean, and I, you know, and I, I don't think we need to belabor it too much, because I know that's what you all would do, but I think we want to communicate that really, really clearly to the parents of children who are going into Intro to Calc, because that's the kids, those are the kids that are gonna be impacted.
What we did this year in Intro to Calc, the first quarter of the year was largely all TRIG. So all that, all that TRIG that was taken out of Algebra II was taught in Intro to Calc. We're gonna do that again next year. So that will, that will certainly fill that void for all those students.
And then, I guess...
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So then, when are those students getting that bit of calculus?
That's when I had the question.
So what happens is, there's, there's a limited number of topics that they're not, that they're not getting to in Intro to Calculus. We're getting to them in AP Calculus.
Would it be required that if they want to take AP?
Well, and it's, they're topics we teach now in AP Calc, we just go into them in more depth within AP Calc. So what we have to do is, we have to teach those topics more from the ground up. So where, where they would have the introduction to them, they just won't, so we're gonna have to, we'll fill that void when they take that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, because it's so clear that you guys are coming to this decision because you want to do what's right for kids. And I think we all really appreciate that. And our questions that came up at the last meeting were really just about making sure that we could make this transition as seamless as possible, make sure we're still giving kids everything they need on their diplomas. But we also appreciate that it's, it's very in line with what we've been talking about as a district, that we don't always want to teach to a test. We want to give kids what they need to be productive citizens in our society, and that's really the bigger picture here. And you guys are really following, following that. So I think we all really appreciate that. And I don't know what happens next, but I feel like our questions have been answered. Yeah.
So I think the next step would be to send a letter home, so the parents at the high school level will understand the change. And we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the time. Great. Okay. So moving on to more exciting, more exciting things. Dr. Bowers, I'm gonna let you do the honors of introducing our middle school principal.
Okay, well, we actually, tonight, the next few minutes or the next many minutes are gonna be saying hello, saying goodbye, and saying that we're glad you're here. So kind of a little bit of everything. We have a lot of things to celebrate. We have some new principals in the district that we would like to introduce. They will be approved in, later in the agenda, but we thought we would introduce them to you. Today, I want to tell you that we will also have the principals here walking around the district tomorrow, so they'll be able to meet the students and the faculty, and we will be out on the playground at early dismissal tomorrow. So there'll be a lot of celebration. So we are starting out with Mary Ann Selke. And so, would you like to just stand? And if you wouldn't mind coming over here, because we're gonna ask you to say a few words. Just to say, say hello to the community. So as you know, we've been looking for our elementary principal and our middle school principal, and we were very lucky in both searches. And so, Mary Ann, we were, we went to, on a visitation to her school last week in Hyde Park. And she is the Assistant Principal at the Havlin Middle School in Hyde Park. It's a very large school compared to our little middle school, but it's one that has the same kind of heart and soul and positive environment and everything that we're looking for in our building. It's a student-centered, it's, it's very positive and productive, and we enjoyed our day there. So Mary Ann will be joining us as the middle school principal. We had many screening interviews and three finalists, and she came out the victor. So we're very pleased to have you. So if you would like to just say something very quickly to the community?
Sure. I'd like to say thank you very much. Very excited to begin my time here. I hear nothing but wonderful things about Haldeen, and, you know, the reputation of the school district stretches far and wide, whether it's sports. I know that one of my coaches up in Hyde Park mentioned that he does skirmishes with the Vergadamos, and, or whether it's, you know, connections with Chris Solomon and Carmel, teachers from Carmel. So there's, there's everyone I, everyone that I've spoken with that... So there's everyone that I've spoken with that knows Haldane, has nothing but good things to say about Haldane, and that's what I've seen here as well. So I'm, you said that you feel lucky. I feel very, very lucky to be joining the Haldane family. Thank you.
So welcome. All right. We also would like to introduce our new elementary principal. And we have Mr. David Wallach, who is going to be joining us as our new elementary principal. David was one of my first screening interviews, and I met him out in the parking lot, actually, when the interview started. And it kind of continued as we went inside. But we interviewed a number of many, many people for screening interviews. We had committee interviews two weeks ago. We just visited David's school yesterday, which is in Long Island. And he is presently a principal in a very large district on Long Island, about 10,000 kids you have. And he's actually, right now, the principal of a pre-K K center. They have 14 sections of kindergarten and eight sections of UPK, I think, as you shared. So yes, lots of little bodies running around. So we enjoyed being in his building, vivacious, vibrant. Everybody was, it was just a happy place to be. We met his teachers and his support staff, his secretary, and everybody had just the nicest things to say. So we also feel equally as lucky to have David joining us. David just left the elementary classroom five years ago, and he's been a kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade teacher. So he has a lot of experience, 20-some, 23 years as a teacher, three years as an assistant, two years as assistant principal, three years as a principal, and he will be joining us. So welcome, David. So would you like to come say something?
Just want to say thank you to Dr. Bowers, to the school board, and to this wonderful community that I am beyond overjoyed and overthrilled to be joining. I'm hoping it's a home that will be here for me for many, many years to come, working with the faculty, staff, families, and students of our district. So thank you. I just can't wait to get started. I can't wait to be here. So I'm really glad for this opportunity. Thank you.
And then we also have a fond farewell. And as you know, Mr. Harrington is moving on to the next stage of his professional career. He's going back into a K8 building up at Cantico Hills. His six years here have been tremendous. We will miss you. We hope that you find the kind of love and passion and everything that you found here in your next position, and we wish you well. So thank you for your time at Haldane. Okay. So now we go into our goodbyes, and then we'll go into our tenure recommendations. So we have a number of people here that we would like to say goodbye to. Two of the three are here. And we'll start with Carol Filmansky, who, as you know, is Brent's secretary. And the two of them are walking out together. And we are going to miss her. Brent has a few words that he would like to say about her.
Sure. Unfortunately, Carol is not here this evening. Boy, I could not have had the success that I've had for six years without Carol. Anyone who has spent any time in our elementary school knows just how important her work is to maintaining all of the day-to-day, complex work that goes on in the school building. She has been incredibly loyal, a friend, a shoulder to lean on. I'm going to deeply miss her. I know this community and the staff is going to deeply miss her. I recall early in my tenure, sitting at my desk and hearing one of our middle school students, very kind of uncharacteristic for our students here at Haldane, speaking on the phone to his mother in a way that clearly was not appropriate. And I recall getting up, just about getting ready to get up from my desk, and hearing Ms. Filmansky say, "How dare you speak to your mother like that?" And I thought, wow. She's been terrific. She's going to deeply be missed. I'm going to deeply miss her. It was a source of anxiety for me prior to the opportunity that unexpectedly presented itself for me, anticipating having a new administrative assistant. You know, this building is going to deeply miss her work and her leadership, her leadership with the CSEA, and just her ability to ensure that parents have peace of mind each and every day when there is some sort of challenge, whether it's arrival or dismissal or some question. It's Carol on the other end of the phone in most instances, who is kind of the first line to help reduce the source of anxiety that a parent may be feeling. So I will share more at Thursday's retirement.
So Brent, if you will stay there because you have a couple of other ladies to say goodbye to. So Maria Gregorio is going to be retiring after many years in the district. We will miss her. She has been, she's done just a little bit of everything, and this year has really taken on the elementary library with vim and vigor. And we thank you. We thank you for your time, and we're going to miss you.
Yeah, not just this year. In the six years that I've been here, and I know well before I arrived, Maria has been that source of constant presence in our elementary library. In six years, we've had a number of transitions for a number of different reasons, and in each single instance, it has been Maria who has been the source of stability and guidance for each new individual who's assumed responsibility over a vibrant elementary library program. And in every single instance, she has been the source of strength for that individual in much the same way that Ms. Filmansky has been for me. She has been very much the leadership and the presence in ensuring a vibrant elementary program. She's going to deeply be missed. She's going to be deeply missed beyond the library and her presence on the playground and supervision with our students, her presence. And, you know, Maria, when I think of you, I just think of grace, you know, absolute grace and presence. And, you know, Maria is very much grounded in recognizing what's most important in life and being able to prioritize. And I remember on many, many occasions, Maria always saying to me, "Brent, family is what matters most." So we wish you well as you start your next chapter. And I know you have many, many wonderful chapters to be had with your family and your grandchildren moving forward, and we wish you well.
And I'm going to use the same descriptor that Julie Sniffin used today because I thought it would just fit her perfectly. Julie is at the eighth grade semi-formal tonight, so I'm going to be sharing some of her thoughts. But at the eighth grade moving up ceremony, she kind of described Jean Sendali as our colorful teacher. And what else? I thought that just kind of summed it all up. For those of you who may not know Mrs. Sendali, she is Haldane. She has been here for 42 years, and she is going to be leaving Haldane after a wonderful, rewarding career. I've been catching her with tears in her eyes for the last couple of months and kids giving her hugs. It's going to be a transition for us, and we're going to miss you deeply. So thank you for your time here.
I can speak too, yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. Colorful, yes. Passionate, yes. Loud, in a very way, right? Because that passion always comes through. 1976, that's the bicentennial, the year Ms. Sendali started, the year that her last principal would be born.
Oh, my God. You're showing very old right now.
There is not a hall space in this district, I think, that is not adorned with the artwork of our children at Haldane that have been inspired and engaged in Ms. Sendali's art room. And what a legacy to leave behind in terms of your presence and your lingering who you are by having all of those students. Your work continues and lives in the building. And you have been, you have been the source of art in this community for 42 years and will be deeply missed. There is not a resource or art supply that a student at Haldane has not experienced. And if you don't believe me, you should have, she's cleaned out a lot of the tunnel, but if you've ever been in the tunnel, you know just how many resources Ms. Sendali has acquired and used in her rich art program through the years. And in fact, we took the liberty last week at our last faculty meeting of having a plaque in honor of Ms. Sendali and as a staff, naming the tunnel the Jean Sendali Tunnel. Let it always be known. Jean, I'm going to miss you. You know that. One last thing I want to share about Jean. Jean has that laugh that you just laugh with her. It's that big, boisterous, loud laugh that makes you feel good, and you laugh along with her. And Haldane is going to miss that. I'm going to miss that. But we know that you have great things to come in your next chapter. So congratulations.
Okay. And then, although this is not a retirement, we have kind of a bittersweet thing to share with the community. Our wonderful SRO, Paul Piazza, was just, has been promoted to, what's your new title going to be?
Investigator.
He is going to be an investigator for the Putnam County Sheriff's Department. So we are going to lose him. He is going on to his new career, although he did promise us that he's going to be stationed on this side of the county. So when we need to call on somebody, Paul will be here. And so they handpicked his replacement for us. And I have to tell you, I just found out today that the person that's replacement was one of my students when I was a high school principal. So he handpicked Charlie Johnson, who is the SRO right now in the school that Paul came from in Brewster. And then Charlie filled in for Paul in Brewster, and now Charlie's going to be coming to us. So would you like to say a couple of words, or do you just want to not say? Okay?
I'm not really going anywhere. I'll just be off the street, and I'll be wearing it from time to time.
Yep. Well, congratulations on your new promotion. Okay. So now we have, we're glad you're here. We have some beautiful ladies that are going to be conferral of tenure tonight. Actually, we have a number of them. We have three ladies that were hired together, Ashley Linda, Jenna Isabella, and Marilyn Brenisi. They were hired three years ago. It was one of the first things that I did when I came into the district, and I'll tell you, was some of the best things that I have done. We'll start with Ashley. Ashley actually was teaching, I think in White Plains, was it, as I remember, for just a couple of years. And she came to us, she's a graduate of Haldane, and we interviewed a number of people, and there was no one that could touch Ashley. I mean, she was clearly the right choice. And I'm going to say this for both, all three of them, really. You know, the growth that they have made in the district since they've been here in three years, it's just incredible. And I walk into their classrooms, and we have people that are way on their way to becoming masterful teachers. So Ashley, I love what you do in your classroom. Thank you for the work that you've done with our senior class and all the other things, the ladies that you kind of give the support to in some of our different groups. So thank you. We are very glad to have you. So Jenna, we actually had a late summer, I guess it was, resignation for an English teacher. And so we knew that we had a limited amount of time in order to hire somebody. So I kind of sent out a May Day call to all the superintendents in the Putnam North and Westchester region. And I said, "We need the perfect person to walk across the door and become an English teacher. Does anybody have somebody they could recommend and would just be the perfect fit for us?" So Fran Wills in Putnam Valley emailed me back and said, "I have the perfect person." And we did meet a number of people, but the one that was our match was Jenna. And she has, she's another one, and I think we've talked about a number of times how much you've grown over the last few years. And she was right out of college. She's three years into it. Her classroom, I just love being in your classroom, and I love what you're doing. And we are so very pleased to have you. Your work with our theater department, I don't think she's been home, well, probably no more than Andrea has and Alessa. She's here all the time, and they go from one play to the next to the next. And so they're a good pair, and they put on wonderful shows. So thank you. We are very happy to have you. And Marilyn, Marilyn actually came to us, and she was hired as a lever placement. And after watching her in their classroom for a year, we knew she was our match. And she became, she went into a tenure-track position. Again, I love being in your classroom. You have such innovative things that are going on there, to watch you work with your kids and the independence that they've generated and everything that goes on in your room. It's really, it's masterful. And you've done a terrific job. And, I mean, I have to say, when I go into the classrooms of all our math teachers here, and I've never been able to say this before, I actually understand what you're talking about. And so that's something for all of you. It's across the board. So we're very glad to have you. Your tenure date is a little bit later than everybody else's because she was out of maternity leave. So a great reason for you not to be here. So we're glad to have you. And although she had a prior commitment and couldn't be here, we are also granting tenure to Kathy Serino. And if you've been to any of our concerts over the last couple of years, you know how masterful she is. And I've been in her classroom a number of times. She has 50, 60 kids that she's able to keep going, and it's just fast-paced. Everybody knows what they're doing. The sound becomes more and more melodic as the years go on. And when you go to her concerts, you just floor to about what she can do with our kids. So we are very glad to have her. We wish that she could be here with us tonight, but she cannot. So congratulations to Kathy. I think at this point, I think we've said...
Could we just have, if you don't mind, would everybody just, those that we just honored, stand up? Could our new tenure teachers stand up? Our retirees stand up? Just to get, the camera can see you. We can give you a big round of applause. Thank you one more time for your work. Thank you.
So with all those wonderful celebrations in mind, we are now going to take a quick break, go into the next room. We have refreshments, and everybody can give everybody a hug and, you know, welcome and say goodbye and say we're glad you're here.
Okay, thanks.
We are all properly cupcaked, ready to reconvene.
They're still out there.
You're represented.
Okay. So we are going into the superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, we have a number of things to talk about tonight. I told you at the last meeting that we were going to have, begin our focus group for the potential upcoming referendum. And we did so on Tuesday, June 13. We had a number of people that joined us, and we talked about a bond referendum that we are considering due to the fact that we have some absolute needs within the district. And we highlighted what those needs are. So we've talked about them here a number of times, and that... I told you at the last meeting that we were going to have, begin our focus group for the potential upcoming referendum. And we did so on Tuesday, June 13th. We had a number of people that joined us. And we talked about a bond referendum that we are considering due to the fact that we have some absolute needs within the district. And we highlighted what those needs are. So we've talked about them here a number of times and it includes the heat delivery system, not the boilers, but the heat delivery system of the main building. It includes new windows. It includes things that are just, that were, things are just getting old and we have to fix them up. So we introduced the concept. We will have additional conversations early in September. We welcome anybody who wants to be part of that conversation to join us. And we are looking at the potential of probably somewhere between a, to a three and a $5 million referendum just to do the things to keep the, the district flowing smoothly. And we will talk more about that as time goes on. We also shared with you that we are going to have a new SRO, Charlie Johnson. Paul Piazza has, is taking on a new role at the sheriff's department. He will be an investigator. He will be out of uniform and into plain clothes, and we wish him well, but he will be here. He will be on this side of the county and he asked to be on this side of the county so he can continue to have the relationship with Haldane. So he's done a great job for us.
You know, I just wanted to say, Paul has been so great. You know, we, I remember two years ago, was it, that we were having these conversations about, should we have an SRO? Should we have an SPO? The community wasn't sure. We weren't sure. What does it mean? Is it scary? You know, what is it kind of a statement does it make? Oh, good. Paul, I'm glad you're here. I'm singing your praises. And so we, we were apprehensive about it. And it was a big initiative for us. And Dr. Bowers really championed it and Mr. Ahm really championed it. And we took the leap and it worked out, really, I think, because Paul was the right choice. He, he really helped people see that an SRO isn't about law and order only. It's about education. It's about community. It's about building bridges. It's about being safety and being smart about safety. And I think we, we owe this transition really working to, to Paul and to his presence. And I'm sure Charlie Johnson will be a great fit and, and continue the progress. But for me, I really think Paul's work was, made it happen.
Yep. We agree. And we spoke about it that, today, because he really created the transition and created a level of comfort that wasn't there. So Charlie's going to have an easier time, excuse me, coming in than Paul did, but we appreciate everything you've done. Okay. So we also have another version of the calendar that is on the agenda today. And between the time we approved the last calendar and now, the State Education Department has published a number of requirements and changes that didn't exist before. And we had to go back and look at our calendar to make sure that there were, the requirements were met. One of the differences between the old requirements and the new requirements is that the, the elementary school needs to be in session for 25 hours a week in order to receive state aid for each of the days. The high school, 27 and a half hours per week for state aid purposes. And what's new about it, this has always been the regulations, but now they're asking districts to pull out lunch. And so it has to be those number of hours excluding lunch. So we've had to kind of look at our timing and for the weeks, we're fine as far as the time on a, on an average week, but if we want, if we're having an early dismissal or we're having a two-hour delay or anything that is, you know, related through the week, we have to ensure that we have at least those number of hours excluding lunch. And we're about two and a half hours, both at the elementary and the secondary schools, in excess of the mandates when lunch is pulled out. So we can still have the opportunity of having two-hour delays and having half-days. But the timing and the way that we do it is going to be a little different. And so when we can release kids, there will be, there'll be a different time depending on if it's only an elementary half-day or if the middle school and high school are also included in the half-day. So we will, we'll ask parents to pay special attention to the time of dismissal based on the day for the half-days because sometimes for the elementary, it'll be 12:15 and sometimes it'll be 12:30. And it also, and so the days when it's only elementary, it's going to be 12:15 dismissal. For the days that the entire district, including the high school and middle school, is included, it will be a 12:30 dismissal. So there will be some changes.
What will happen with an early dismissal due to snow or?
That's not included.
It's not included.
Yeah. So, and just like a one-hour, two-hour delay because of bad weather would not be included in that as well. So even if you had two or three days where you had to have a delay, that's not going to impact state aid. So.
So Diana, looking at this calendar that I think we all just got, I don't know if you guys got a chance to really sit with it, but looking at it and comparison to the one we approved, are just the half-days kind of mixed around and changed a little bit? Or is there anything substantial? Like, are the vacation changed? Has the day we come back changed? Has any of that stuff that like parents hang on to changed?
I just noticed that the time at dismissals changed, but the calendar stayed the same.
And that would be, in some cases, that would be the case. But we had, where we used to have parent-teacher conferences and we would have them two days in a row, now we can't do that because we, each week only has two and a half hours in excess. So we may have one on Friday and one on Monday because they're then calculated within two separate weeks. But some of those types of things have changed. So we're making sure that we, we kind of, we spread out the two-hour delays and we spread out the, the parent-teacher conferences a little bit wider just so we made sure that we met the mandates. And, but the, the calendar really didn't change as far as any kind of vacation time or start time. That's been in place. It's just the, the regulations are being met to the letter of the law in this calendar. And it's different than they have been in the past.
Okay. So I think the fact that, for example, that like the, in elementary school, that the parent-teacher conferences don't take place on consecutive days, like, that's just been the case forever, like forever. And people wonder why. So I'm sure you have a plan to let people know why. Like, this is not an arbitrary change, you know? And I'm trying to think about, like, I know the calendar's already kind of crowded, but like, do you add, like, I think it's important that it be on the document somewhere, like even that this year represents, I don't know, that, I don't, like, like a little text box right there that, that explains, you know, something about, you know, this, this calendar, this calendar implements blah-dee-blah regulations established by blah-dee-blah-dee-blah in spring 2017.
Yep. So I'll, I'll say that this calendar reflects the new regulations from the State Education Department released.
Yeah.
And, and we're actually attaching the new regulations. It's a one-page document that will be with it.
Yeah.
So people can understand. And it's very complex and it, there's a lot of, I mean, it gets kind of confusing the way it's written and I'm sure that.
But this is the kind of thing everybody.
Yep.
Tacks on their refrigerator somewhere.
Yes.
You know? And you'll forget that one-pager and that will be the reminder in December when your parents are having to deal with scheduling childcare.
Yeah. And I think that it's important for us to really stress and for our new elementary principal, really stress to our new elementary principal that there will be days that we'll be dismissing at 12:15 and other days that dismiss at 12:30. And that's, that, we're doing that to meet the exact letter of the law of the regulations.
And we do get reminders, which I appreciate, in the, in like the folder from the teachers or from the school secretary, whomever's sending them out, saying, this week, there's really dismissal at this time. You know, so the parents do get a reminder in addition to what's on the calendar.
But it's not an arbitrary change.
And then there's also an email reminder.
Yep. So I think it's important. And, and this was, I can, I can tell you, this has kind of been a ripple effect all through New York State because this is something that has created problems for many districts. And the fact that it came, the regulations changed after the, the districts adopted the calendar is also a question. I mean, if we had known this in November, we would have, it would have been reflected in the first calendar that was created, but we didn't. So that's an important piece.
So are you sending this out to the district?
We will. We'll send it out in the blast with an explanation, with the regulations, highlighting that there'd be different dismissal times for the elementary school. And, you know, we'll give them a.
Just so there's not uproar, that vacations are the same and the day that we come back to school is the same.
Yep.
Because people might already have things scheduled.
Yeah. And that will not change. Okay. So we have the new Tech Network Annual Conference, July, actually, for most of us, the 5th through the 10th, this says the 6th through the 10th, but we have some pre-workshops scheduled in St. Louis, Missouri. And we are taking, I think there are going to be 17 of us that are going. We have our new principals that are going to be joining us. We also have a new fourth, fourth and fifth grade teacher and a new physics teacher, all of which are, will be approved tonight in the consent agenda if the board approves them. So we have a number of, we are now going to have four coaches that are going to go into their second year of coach training. And that's something that's a real positive and we're excited about that. And it should be a great time for us to, to learn together, to study together, to plan together. And I'm looking forward to it.
Is Ms. Sniffin going on?
She is not, she and, she and Mr. Sniffin have a special thing planned.
Okay.
But she went last year. So, so there, but there, we will, all, the rest of us will be there and with bells on. So I just want to let you know that when you meet on July the 5th, you will be meeting with me via FaceTime because I will be in St. Louis. So that's where I'll be. So the, the, we have the reorg meeting on July 5th. We have the August Board of Education meeting will be Thursday, August 17th at 7 o'clock in this room. And we will have a hiatus in between this meeting and the next one.
Can I just remind the board that at the reorg meeting, we will elect new leadership, new officers, and we will appoint or raise our hand for the audit committee. The other committees, we kind of can discuss at our retreat and we kind of figure that out as we go. And we have some more time to discuss it because we just need to make sure those are in place by the fall. But the audit committee, we, we don't want to lay over. So we can either decide, okay, whoever's on there now is just going to stay on and we'll change it later. Or if there's somebody, people who want to do it, we can talk about it then. So just, you can put those things on your radar.
Okay. One thing that isn't on the report, but I think I should mention it, and while Diana is here from Garrison, we are in conversation with Garrison about the potential of having them join us for our summer program. And they have, I think, 33 students that they would like to couple with ours. Right now, we're going to be looking to see if we have additional teachers that have an interest in being hired for the program. And then we'll work out the finances with Garrison. But it's something that Laura and I have been talking over the last couple of days. Andrea Saunders is the person who's running the program and she's been in contact with Garrison, so just, just information.
Is this the transition to kindergarten programs or a different?
Well, it's K through Rising Third.
K through Rising Third, okay.
And it's going to be three weeks for the summer. It's going to help make sure that the kids that we're concerned about with literacy slide will not have the degree and we'll be getting them ready to come back.
I didn't realize it was K through third.
It was originally, we, I think it was originally.
Y'all didn't mishear that.
We were actually hoping to go K-5. And then when we pulled some of the funding away during the budget cycle, we were able to then support, based on the numbers of people that wanted to go, we were able to support K through Rising Third.
Great.
So yes, we're, we're spreading it out. And we're hoping to go back to K-5. But this is something that Garrison knows that this is the, the grade level and we'll have to figure out how the finances go. But, you know, that's something that we're, you know, we like to join with Garrison and they get to know our kids and we, and our kids get to know their kids, and that's a good thing.
And this will be the first time in a while, I want to make sure I'm understanding, this is for, for kids?
Yes.
Kids, I don't feel like I'm, because I really, because I remembered it being presented up like first and second, but any case, it doesn't matter. We, I think it's, I think it's great. And it's been a while since Haldane's been able, able to offer summer support for kids. And we know that there's summer slide for lots of kids and for our kids that are most in need of support. It's, it's really important that there's, so it's, I just think it's fabulous news.
And we really did talk about first and second, but first, second are Rising Third.
Oh, that makes sense. Gotcha.
We did talk about it because I remember even saying, like, I was happy, you know, because, because you're right, we didn't have it for a long time and we used to have it and I thought it was a great thing. And then, you know, Gaffey and Kathy came and then, and then they took it away and we lost it and then it came back. So I, I remember, I, I remember, I remember saying that, at, at the board meeting, I was, I was happy that, that they brought it back. So, so it's a great thing, yeah.
Well, and I think we said it was going to, we, through the budget attrition process, we came back to kindergarten only, but it sounds like because of the number of students we can offer at K through three.
Right. So that's the good news.
Okay. Any communication from the public at this time? Okay. We're going into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
We're talking about the minutes of the Board of Education meeting on June 6th. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you to the Haldane School Foundation for $23,566 in grants. And thank you to the parents and community members who donate that money. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
So do we need to add David's name?
Yeah.
Yes. This was, you were going to read the, at the.
Before we, before I say consent agenda, or now?
Now would be a good time.
Okay, great. Okay. So we have a whole bunch going on, on this consent agenda personnel. One of the things, number two, says appointment of principal, Haldane Elementary School TBD. So I am clarifying. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education appoints Mr. David Wallach to the position of principal of Haldane Elementary School effective July 1st, 2017. In accordance with the Board of Education-Haldane Administrators Association contract, Mr. Wallach will replace Mr. Brent Harrington, who resigns this month. Mr. Wallach will serve a four-year probationary period in the tenure area of principal beginning on July 1st, 2017.
You know, I think it actually. Originally, it should be a three-year because you just, you received tenure from your prior district, correct? So I think we're going to change that.
Mr. Wallach will serve a three-year probationary period in the tenure area of principal beginning on July 1st, 2017 and continuing through June 30th, 2020. This is a conditional appointment contingent upon a fingerprinting criminal background check clearance. Okay. So we're adding that in. Any further comments about any of these multiple personnel issues? Things that stick out to me is that we're changing Ms. Jody Champlin to becoming the elementary school. Is that in here?
She will be, yes, we, that's pending the civil service exam. So we're, we're going to be transferring some of our clerical staff around. Jody will become Mr. Wallach's secretary. And we are going to have a replacement for Jody. And so there's, there are a number of different things that kind of the no effects that we'll be having. And Ashley will be taking over the front desk at the, at the high school.
And that is also contingent on.
Right. We have to make sure that every, all the ducks need to fall in a row. And so right now.
So should we approve these now? That was kind of my question when I asked you in that email.
Well, we, we, we have to approve the changes now and then if there's, if we need, if there's any changes that have to be made, we'll have to change it at that point. Yep.
Okay. There's a new physics teacher in here, which is exciting. New elementary classroom teacher for grade five and grade four. And there is an approval of a stipend for Mr. Solomon that's in there to, is he here? No. Is in here to thank him for his additional work. Yeah, he really became the high school principal in a lot of ways for the past two months, doing, and continued his work as dean of students and athletic director. So that's just a little thank you for his extra work. And there's some, oh, there's also Ms. Andineau has a two-year. Oh, there's also Ms. Andineau has a two-year contract approval, a contract renewal with a 2% raise.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And some more recess days, because we work her so hard. Same for Ms. Linda Dearborn, and I think Mr. Torri as well. Okay, anything else to add? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, we're going into, oh, congratulations, Mr. Wallach, it's official. We're going into the policy review. I'll tell you, I think these just came online. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at them. They were, they were not here when I was looking this morning. So do we want to go through these? Have you guys had a chance to look at them, or do we need to table them?
I think to table-
Well, do we need to do anything with the student representative before, like, I mean, school, I know school's out, but-
Yeah. Well, I think next year we'll be appointing the person in the beginning of the year. Probably beyond that, we'll be appointing the person in June of the year.
Right, okay.
So it, we can do, you can table them till June 5th, or we can-
Oh, July 5th?
Sorry, July 5th. We can also talk about them in August, but-
I'd like to table them to July 5th, if you guys don't mind, because I didn't get a chance to look at the second reads, unless you guys did and you feel comfortable discussing. Margaret, Peggy?
Can I, well, can I just say one comment, because I've talked to some of these kids about the student representative? The one hesitation the kids had was, would it limit the kid who would be able to do it because of extracurricular activities if that perhaps an easier commitment for them would be a semester instead of a year? That doesn't give us the longevity of it, but it might open it up for a kid who does a fall sport and not a spring sport, or something like that. That's just, that's just a comment that, that some kids made to me.
You know, I understand that need, but I have to say, you know, if we look at, like, how the board operates, we really start discussing things in the fall and kind of get to it somewhere in the spring, you know? It really, like, it has this year-long trajectory.
Right, so it's just, it's just a thought that, that was something that came back to me from one of the kids, that there might be kids that would say, mm, I can't do it because I want to be in the spring musical.
And I think that's okay.
And if we don't find the right candidate for this year, then we keep pushing forward and maybe the following year.
Mm-hmm. And we're saying that it can be, it has to be a senior, it could be any age.
I thought it could be any.
It can be any age.
It would come from the student council.
But it had to be recommended by-
Junior, senior, student council?
Yeah, probably it would be recommended by the, by the student council, so.
And approved by the principal.
Right.
Right.
Just throwing it out there.
I think it's a good point, I think, I, I, I hear that. I kind of feel like let's see how, what, how it goes, as is. If we need to make amendments because we don't get anybody, then, you know? Okay, so are you guys wanting to table these till July 5th?
Yes.
Yes, yes, very good, okay. Volunteer application form. Are we ready to approve this? I think the only comments we made last time around, or I think maybe I made them, was that I just wanted a little more clarity on who these volunteers are. And I feel like that was put in there, giving more information.
I think it's much more clear now, but at the very bottom, it says attachment. Is there something else that we're missing, or is that left over from before?
That may be left over from before, yeah.
Just so people don't get it and try to figure out what that is.
Yep. We can remove that. Okay, I don't think we have an attachment for it. Unless it's the policy.
Actually, I thought it was that it was an attachment to the policy. I thought that's what the word attachment was to, was supposed to mean.
Well, I don't know if, well, when they fill it out, I don't know if the policy will be attached, and they'll be looking for the attachment. So we, maybe we could put something in parentheses that says, see policy number-
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody other, any other comments, or do you guys want to?
And were we going to make some reference to, to the fingerprinting and who pays for the fingerprinting, or did we decide that that-
We, we decided that it would be for people who are seeing kids on a regular basis and who could potentially be in a position where they're with students alone. But that's, I'm not sure if, if that, did I answer what you just asked?
No, because we were talking about who pays for the fingerprinting. Does the district pay for it, or do they pay for it individually?
I think, I mean, my recommendation is if it's for volunteers and we require fingerprinting, since we pay for it.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
We also said if it was someone that was in the system, a teacher or worked for a government somewhere, they probably, they don't have to get fingerprinted.
That's right. And if they're in teach, then we, all we have to do is look it up.
Right.
Okay, so what do you guys think? Do you want to approve it? Do we need more time with it? Is everybody okay with it?
I think it's good.
Laura?
Let's do it.
Yep.
Okay. Do you need to read anything about this? Or should we just say we approve it?
Recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the volunteer application form as edited, with the bottom word attachment changed to refer to the policy number.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the merger agreement, again, this was a late entry.
I thought we don't have to, do we?
You have to approve the merger.
The merger, right, sorry, 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 yes, yes. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further comments about the merger agreement?
No, let's do it.
No, for the love of God, no more comments about the merger. All right, Julia, hit it, I think we're ready.
All right. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the merger agreement between Haldane, Lakeland, Walter Panis, Hendrick Hudson, and Putnam Valley School Districts for 2017, 2018, and authorizes the board president, superintendent, high school principal, and athletic director to sign this agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I just, you know.
No!
I'm just, again, I'm not discuss, I mean, I'm just, you know, my point was, was ma, was made, and, and that's fine, and you, I, yours is respected, so.
And if it comes back.
And if it comes back, you know, I have, we deny it.
Told you so?
Totally do.
All right, Evan, could you just put, and I told you so, on record?
Evan can refer to the videos of the board meetings from-
Yeah.
Really?
June 20th, June 7th.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you kidding me?
God.
Can I abstain from voting?
You may.
Yeah, I'm going to do that.
Okay.
All right, communication from the public? New business, CSE, CPSE recommendations.
Okay, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special and Preschool Special Education as submitted.
Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we are at that calendar, to approve it again.
Okay. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the revisions as indicated on the attached Haldane Central School District calendar for 2017, 2018.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, to the code of conduct. So Diana, talk us through this a little bit, let me see if I get this right. So we approve the code of conduct every year. There is a constant revision process, it's kind of a living document. So there's a, a committee that exists that Margaret has been a part of, I believe.
For many years.
For many years.
For many years, I haven't been a minute lately.
Okay.
Meetings are 3:30.
And little revisions get made along the way, and then we approve it so that it can stay active, but revisions are, are always happening.
And I think that we probably will see a number of revisions come with a new principal and with a new middle school principal, and, you know, that we'll be looking at it, because there may be changes that happen multiple times through the year. But we have to approve it for this upcoming year, and we'll probably approve it again.
Mm-hmm. And so this is just for review, this is, I guess we want to approve it ideally at our reorg meeting, right?
Can I just make a couple of comments? I think the painting of the bell, although I don't have a problem with it, it's under the wrong section when you go to section 18, because that's the section on, like, violence and carrying guns and stuff. I think it should be under a, you know, graffiti kind of section, as opposed to violence.
So you-
I think we need to move it to, like, number seven or number six, not number, not page 18.
There is some comments already about painting the bell. This is additional, so why, we can keep it right where it is, I would think.
Oh, that, it's not, that's new, that whole line there is new in that section.
Yeah, but there is, there was a section about painting the bell, and that you had to get permission.
Word of policy.
I'm pretty sure it was code conduct.
Really?
I didn't get a chance, quite honestly, to try to locate that, but I know there was-
Because this is another example of a document, so right here, I'm like, oh, let me just see if I can find it.
It's right.
Right, and I'm scrolling, and scrolling, and scrolling, because in the table of contents, I just want to link, I want to be able to just click it and link me to where we're, what we're talking about.
So you want to, you want to see if we can make it searchable?
You can. Yeah. It's, you have to, again.
No, I see what Margaret's saying, that it's been added. So E on page 18 is engage in conduct, that's, that's violent. The addition is adding number eight about painting the bell, and so what you have on that under E is-
That doesn't seem to match.
Right? Violent act, harassing contact, possessing a weapon, displaying what appears to be a weapon, threatening to use weapon.
Yeah, that doesn't match.
Destroying-
It's just, I think the pages incorrect.
Well, it is intentionally, well, it is intentionally damaging or destroying personal property or property of the school.
That would be appropriate.
And it is under, yeah, so number six and number seven are, are damaging school district property, and my interpretation of what that addition to number eight is saying, paint is that intention of the policy is to say that painting the bell outside of these prescribed limits falls into the category of graffiti. And under that circumstances, it actually, since graffiti has been under E, it would make sense for it to be, to continue to be under E, if I'm interpreting.
But it's, it's really not a violent act.
But then none of the, none of those, oh, the others are damaging, well-
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and figure out a, a place. I mean, I think, I don't think people would look there to find it.
Exactly, exactly, that's my point, so.
Yeah, I mean, the title of the letter E is engage in conduct that is violent.
Right.
That's the title.
Yeah, so graffiti in other ways does fall under this. My point is graffiti, I don't know if graffiti is other places in the code of conduct, but the other, any other kind of graffiti falls under this same section.
Well, we'll, we'll take a look at it, and maybe we need to find a, a new home for it.
But you know, I just did a search for the word bell, and it only shows up three times that it's in this sentence. So I think it's, I think it's a policy, not in the code of conduct.
Maybe it was the policy, that's what I was trying to-
Yeah.
But again, that's-
But I know this exists somewhere about painting the bell.
I agree, I, I think you're right, now that you say that, I think you're right.
Yeah, and I, I think we have to be very clear and, about what we, the kids should and should not be able to do. And, and we also need to make sure that they ask for permission, because we grant permission if they want to paint the bell, but they have to let us know first.
I know, in prior years, actually, I'm pretty sure Brian sat there and, once they asked permission, sat there with them and watched them paint the bell, so.
Which we did the other day, right after they had graduation rehearsal. We had Blaine Fitzgerald painted the bell, and we had a number of kids that had hamburgers and hot dogs and sat and watched them do it.
Yeah, there were handfuls of them.
Yeah.
The other, the other question I had on here was the one where it says students must park only in the designated lot, I can't figure out, I can't find K-3 on page 24. And that's where that says that goes.
Okay, we will, we will clarify.
It's just, it's just, it's not matching, but it could be the way that the pages changed when it was attached. I just couldn't figure out where it went.
So kids can't bring water guns to school, that has to do with the game, assuming in the high school.
Well, they, we had water guns all over the place, they were playing, so I think it's, that is also something with permission, and it's, and it's very controlled. They know what they can and cannot do. So I think it's for kids that just want to come in and create problems with it, but we will still always have that game. That's kind of a rite of passage.
Okay, so we'll continue to look at this and hope to approve it next meeting. Okay, any further communication from the public? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody.